Like to welcome everybody to the Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners Caucus Meeting, June 2nd, 2022. George, can you do roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Baraco.
Here.
Mr. Gordioso.
Here.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Here.
Mr. Neary.
Here.
Mr. Whitaker.
Here.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
Lisa Katania.
Yeah.
And myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. We'll open up the citizens' comments before we go to the floor here tonight. We'll go to the citizens who are not able to attend the meeting in person. And they can call in by dialing 571-748-4021. And that number again is 571-748-4021. Enter in 1-811-87931-POUND. Enter in 1-811-87931-POUND. To unmute your phone, dial star six. Enter "unmuting your phone", state your name and address, and begin your comment. You're given two minutes to speak on, and then please back to unmute. Leave the phones open for a few minutes.
Can I have it again?
No, this is all, this is for the phone calls, call-ins first, then we'll go to the public. Thank you. Take note, there was no citizen comments phoned in tonight. We'll go to the floor at the meeting here tonight, in person. State your name, your address, and telephone number if you'd like us to get back to you.
Hi, my name is Eileen Lehman, and I'm actually a resident of Glen Mills. But I'm here in behalf of my brother, who is a former resident of the Upper Chichester, many, several years ago. I guess my, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I know people say, oh, that's not our problem. It's revenues or it's, you know, this debt collector, whatever. But here's the thing, is it's come to my attention that actually for several people, even in people in Chester Heights and Upper Chichester and stuff, they're getting these letters from Keystone, saying like they owe money for tax years when like they didn't live in Upper Chichester during those tax years. Okay? Now, I spoke to the revenue people, and the guy wasn't very helpful. But, you know, I had to explain things to him and stuff. But the thing is, is I don't know what data the PA Revenue Department is giving to people. And actually, it's quite scary that our, I don't know if they're giving our tax of, you know, our tax, income tax returns and everything to this debt collector group. That does not make me feel very comfortable. I don't know what they're giving them. But somebody is screwing up. Because the one thing is, is this is the first notice we get about this. This doesn't seem to be due process. You get something from a debt collector, it's like, oh, you're guilty? And now prove yourself innocent. That does not seem like due process, okay? So I don't know how this process they're doing it. But your name is being used, it's supposed to be for your benefit of Upper Chichester. And I know I spoke to the real estate tax guy. And he said, yeah, a number of people had been calling him about this. And he said he was going to talk to the town manager about this. And people are getting these letters and they make no sense. So it seems to be, if nothing else, definitely a lack of diligence, okay? Because if they sent him the tax returns, it's right on there, his address. Glen Mills is in Chester Heights Borough, it's not in Upper Chichester. So why are you sending someone? And who, you know, clearly by their own thing, he doesn't, he's not liable for local income tax to Upper Chichester. We pay a property tax, a local property tax in Chester Heights, that's how they handle it. And if where your employer is, well, his employer is not in Upper Chichester either. So I don't know if they got the W-2 or whatever, and, you know, you know, so this whole thing is a mess. So somebody is just not doing their jobs. And again, it's, you know, well, we're the government, we're the government's debt collector, let the taxpayers figure it out. I'm getting tired of this, okay? You know, it's like every time you have to deal with somebody, it's like let the taxpayers figure it out. It's getting to the point of like, but why are we paying all these government salaries and everything? And, you know, for people, if it's let the taxpayers figure it out. Every time there's an issue with something, you know, this is the biggest problem. This is crisis of competence, crisis of diligence in our country. And, you know, I, you know, I don't want to get emotional here, but, you know, when we had that withdrawal out of Iraq, that was the most embarrassing thing. That reminds me of the letdown to the South Vietnamese. And I know you're saying, well, that's a big jump. But it's the same thing, it's this crisis of competence. Like I remember like when they first said they made peace with the Taliban, I was like, oh, yeah, they're going to be in Kabul in no time. And then like they're within 50, 50 miles. Okay, fine, you get the point. Basically, this, you maybe should look into this. The PA Department of Revenue, you better do something. I'm going to be filing complaints with FTC and whoever else will listen. I don't know if John Morgan will take the case, but we'll see. All right, but.
Excuse me, one, one second, ma'am. You were saying your brother, that was mail from our EIT collector from Keystone?
The Keystone people, yeah.
To his address in Chester Heights or Glen Mills?
Glen Mills, yeah.
And what year was that one?
They said it was 2019. He moved out of there in 2016 because my mom died. He moved out of Upper Chichester in 2016 because my mom died.
Okay.
So the letter is saying that he owes for.
2019.
20.
Yeah, just 2019, that's the only year on here. Okay, but here's the point, they should be looking at the data and cleaning it up right there. They had the PA Revenue, they got their freaking tax return. There's no relationship at all to Upper Chichester. This is what I'm talking about, the lack of competence. They're not doing their diligence. And I gotta give them more information? I gotta give them more personal data to this company that can't even read my other stuff correctly? This is what I'm talking about. This is what gets people upset, okay? You gotta be more responsive to the taxpayers. We're not just here to pay for everybody's pension, okay? I mean, this is what gets everybody upset. It's this non responsiveness and this opacity. And it's like, you know, you know, just because you don't know how to do better, doesn't mean there's not a way to do better. Okay? Now, listen, all right? I'm telling you because I have due of some faith in you. I think you can stand up and do the right thing. And if it's, if it's on this Delaware County taxing, you better tell them to do their darn job. And if you gave them the tax return, at least read the address in the tax return and realize where it is. Okay? Because that, right off the bat, that doesn't make him liable at all. Just the fact that he's not a resident of Upper Chichester, okay? I don't know why they're, you know, if they got some discrepancy in the data in the taxes due or something, obviously, it's like right off the bat, okay? So. Well, I'm letting you know, I'm filing a complaint with. I know exactly the contact, but I shouldn't have to contact, is what I'm telling you. And I shouldn't have to be providing more personal information, you know, and exposing more personal information and more identity theft. Who knows, these people are probably selling it on the dark web already. Okay, I gotta go protect those accounts and everything. Anyway, I'm probably going to be filing, I think it's Federal Trade Commission. They say collections group. You put yourself out as a collections group? You sound like a collections group, you're going to be treated like a collections group, okay? So the Federal Trade Commission, I don't know if the State Attorney General will do anything. He's probably in cahoots with these people, who knows? I don't know. But, I mean, and a few other things, okay?
Man, what was your, what was your brother's address in Upper Chi at that time? Right, what, what address was that one? I mean, what street did he live in? Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. We'll go, we'll go back to the citizens' comments. Is there any other citizens in the room that want to make a comment tonight? Just state your name, your address, and telephone number if you want us to get back to you.
Okay, my name's Al Malara. I'm from 4410 Somerset, 610-908-4629. The issue is the, the building on Springbrook, that the two big buildings that they, they built back there. We were in all the meetings at Aston and here. And they said Amazon was not going to move in there. But we found out from someone that does work with the contractors and stuff, that Amazon did get one of the buildings apparently. Somebody that we know that knows that they have a contract there. So there's going to be a lot of trucks and stuff like that. And they, they didn't follow through with what they said they were going to do with the, on top of the wall. They were supposed to put some evergreens and stuff to fill that in. We're, we're literally like the closest, my backyard is like 70 feet yards to the, to the back of those buildings.
Lisa, do we, I mean, do we, are they even that far to put any planning in that area? Do we, are we in communication with them?
There, there's been, there was a lot of promises made that weren't kept.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of stuff they said. They were supposed to put a decorative fence so it would look, because we, the reason, one of the reasons why we moved there is because of the wooded area, which we loved. It was, went all the way back, you didn't see anything except woods. And now we see this, they put a nice wall up, but the wall's there. And then above the wall, they put a chain link fence. They said they weren't going to do that, they said they were going to put a decorative fence.
Have you contacted Aston Township?
Yeah, my wife, my, I wanted my wife to be here, she talked to them today. She talked to the code enforcer Higgins, I think his name is. And he was very, very, very rude on the phone with her. Like, really, really rude. He eventually apologized. And she just told him what I'm telling you, that we found out that it was going to be Amazon in one, I think, one of the buildings. And he kind of went off on her and stuff. So he said that it's going to be a food, some, some kind of food place. I don't know, with snacks and food, stuff like that. So I just want to know if we could put pressure on them to do what they said they were going to do. I mean, if trucks go back there, we're going to hear them beeping and, you know, dumpsters. And there's already, the light shines into our bedroom windows, which we knew was going to happen. And they said they were going to, you know, not, they were going to put trees on the top of the wall. Right now, their evergreens are in front of the gigantic wall, it's not doing anything. So in the winter, it's just this massive building right in our backyard. I was wondering if we could do anything about it. They said, we, we brought it up, and there was, I don't know, how many people went to those meetings? Probably six or seven or eight of us. Neighbors came to the meetings and, and they promised basically that it wasn't going to be Amazon. I mean, there's going to be a ton of traffic coming from 95 through the, Dutton Mill Light is rush hour. Everybody knows how that is. And these were all the concerns that, that we brought up, and they, they really didn't do anything they said.
George, can we just reach out to them and see where they're at with the landscaping and everything? If they're.
Yeah, we've been, we've had a ongoing conversation with them since we found out about the where they're at with the process.
Here's my question, Mike, I'm hoping you can answer it. If they're doing something that is against one of our ordinances, can we enforce it? But if, okay, say it's a noise ordinance. If it's coming into our town, we can't do nothing.
Can we just look into it? I mean, because.
I know, I think since last year, we have, we have consistently raised the concerns from the residents to Aston Township. We have consistently done it, we have consistently gone to them. And unfortunately, our hands a little bit, our hands are tied here as a board because it's not, and the project's being done in Aston Township. But, you know, I have no problem reaching back at the Aston again and raising your concerns. But as far as us, you know, putting pressure, I don't know what type of pressure that we could.
I mean, they said, they said they were going to do certain things that they didn't do. That's not, that's not any good? Well, how, how do we find that out? Right to know, that's all? And could anybody here help us with that or with?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll stay in touch.
Okay. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to do any of that.
It's, it's a simple process. If you go to the, if you go to Aston, ask them that you'd like to submit a right to know, ask them. Yeah, you can ask them for the information that you are looking for, and they have a certain amount of time to respond to you. But five days? But I, I still want to go back to the question. If, if they're doing something that breaks an ordinance or law in our town, we can't do nothing because there are any other towns. So you're telling me I can stand on the other side of a, a property law, a town supplying and commit a crime and nothing can be done? I'm making a.
Well, then, we, we had a, we had the same situation behind here with the buildings. A resident from the next town over came to here because it was our town. And they, because of the noise and lighting and everything. So how's it, any difference? And voice to, and put the right to know in that way. It'd be, it'd be more easier for the resident of the town to go to Aston to do that, okay? I'm sure Joe will be able to guide you through.
Okay.
We've, we've been.
Yeah, we've been talking.
It's kind of since the bombings got up.
We knew this.
We haven't gotten much response.
We, we knew this was going to happen, that was. And they, and they stuck it like instead of near the development in Aston, they stuck it right, right up against our back.
Well, that's, that's our ordinance.
Back before it started, yeah. Yes. Aston themselves cited them a few times for working past like 11:00 PM at night and stuff when it was being constructed and.
Yeah, they were, they were working in the middle of the night sometimes back there. They didn't really care. It's just a shame that they don't, you know, they could have done something to design it a little bit different. I know that's nothing you can do about that now, but. Got it. I, I have another question behind us. We're going to, I don't know if you know anything about the, they're going to dig up that sewer, not sewer.
It's all been approved.
Storm drain, they're going to.
It's all been approved and all the.
Do we know when that's starting?
Probably within.
So that's coming, that's going to come to us to sign off? Okay, I didn't know that.
The bid's been awarded everything.
Okay. Okay, well, we know like where they're going to be digging up? Will they show us anything? Okay. Okay. All right, and then also there's a, just noticed there's a, what do you call? Bathroom that they put up, what the heck, can't think. Porta potty is, they just dropped one off like right across the street from my house practically. Anything that went on with construction and?
In Somerset?
Pulled up tonight and it's across the street, so I don't, I didn't know. Oh, come, for Sunoco?
No, not Sunoco, Monroe.
Okay, what is that?
It's, yeah.
What's Monroe? I mean, what kind, what is it, a gas line?
I think it's jet fuel.
Jet fuel is what they do.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we don't know what that's going to be either, what's going to happen with that? That was already sent out to us?
I don't know, it was sent out the end of last week.
Okay. All right. Okay, so you'll like find out what I have.
Touch base with me again, also, I'll keep doing what I can.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, thank you, you're welcome. Any other citizens' comments out here tonight? Make no more citizens' comments, we'll move on with our professional reports. We'll start with the Township Engineer, Lisa Katani.
Thank you. You do have a copy of my report, just some things that are happening. We've had some conversations concerning the McKay Avenue puddling situation and the punch list. I did find out yesterday that the developer has asked for an extension of time for their PennDOT permit. They've not done any of the PennDOT punch lists till July of next year is the extension. Autozone is getting pretty close to being completed. They did the basin retrofit and the access road. They still have some punch list items to complete. But I believe that within the next month, we'll be seeing a, a request for a final with that project. The Dunkin' Donuts, we have received record plans. I don't know that they've been signed yet. But they are, they have been signed. I haven't, I haven't seen them recorded yet. 820 Columbia also signed record plans for that land development. However, we've received today the MPDES review. And it is, it is deemed incomplete. So they have not, the Conservation District and DEP have not started an actual technical review of that project. So I'm expecting that will probably not happen until around September. The items on my agenda, we have a, the road program. George has on his desk the contracts. AF Damon has several municipalities in this area that he has been awarded the contract. So we are assuming that we'll be in that queue. He has Aston Township, he has Lower Chi, Concord Township, and Thornbury Township. So he'll be working in this particular area. We'll probably see that he's working in the order that the contracts were bid. So we should be seeing that probably, I would say probably in the next six weeks. The Trichester Avenue Streetscape Phase Two update, I can tell you that it is still in PennDOT for review. We have not gotten any review comments back as of yet. Last month, I talked about having a meeting, a public works meeting, to finalize all the priorities for the stormwater projects. That's been completed. Jean Marie was, was going to be typing it up. And Putt will be sending that out to all of the Board of Commissioners if it's not in your pocket now. I am going to ask for the Terrace Circle Basin bid authorization. That basin will be retrofitted with a, an up-to-date stormwater outfall. Right now, it's a, a old design that was completed. It needs to be updated to the current standard, so we're, we're taking care of that. I completed and submitted the watershed protection, restoration and protection program grant. That was submitted last week. You have in your packet a resolution for that grant. And I would ask that that be adopted next week. I'll send that over to DCED. The A R L E grant application has also been announced. It was announced the 31st of May, and the deadline is June the 30th. They don't want too much action on that, I would assume. Anyway, I have provided a memo of various projects that could be done under this grant. This is a traffic safety grant, upgrading signals, upgrading markings, pavement markings, doing small safety projects. George, do they have that list?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so many of the lists, Al Federico and I, and George and I yesterday, and Al and I this morning, went through and came up with a listing of, of potential projects. This could also include if there's an area where we have problems with obstruction and there's safety concerns, there's a lot collisions, accidents because of site distances. This grant will also take care of that. So there's, there's a lot of, of options there. As I said, the, the deadline for this grant is June the 30th. So we would have to do a pre-scoping form. I've got to get that into PennDOT District Six. They'll give me a review of whatever project we determine is one we'd like to do. And then we'll, we'll move forward with the application. Is this under me?
Just keep in mind, if the project going here that you see that you're thinking is insensitive in nature, probably not in this because you're looking at probably eighteen.
Correct, yes.
So this would be something that would say, okay, let's say a permit that you make that for the community is, is obvious that it's. Other thing, he said, correct me among the awards, for like around seventy to eighty thousand?
So most of the awards were, were under $100,000. I had looked at the 2021 awards. Many of them were upgrading traffic signals. So it was a cabinet and maybe some of the lenses, changing things to LED. We already have a lot of that done. Battery backup, we got under a grant, maybe five years ago, six years ago. So we have a lot of that signal upgrade done. The only signal that, or two signals that, that we're aware of, that they could use some help. So we have a lot of that signal upgrade done. The only signal that, or two signals that we're aware of, that they could use some help, we know.
Four fifty-two.
Is four fifty-two Chestnut. That Green Lake Go grant that I submitted, we are supposed to hear of awards sometime in July, we're told. So I don't know whether that's something that you'd want to consider. The other one is this, the intersection of Namans Creek Road and Meeting House Road. That signal was put in with Happy Harry, or last updated with Happy Harry's when Happy Harry's was built. So that's, that's pretty old. I will tell you though, that all of the signals get inspected annually by Signal Service. If there are any items that are necessary to be repaired, Putt has authorized those repairs. So we don't have anything that is of any significance on the list from Signal Service from their 2021 signal report inspection report.
Lisa, what's the, what's the mindset of Larkin and Bethel to reduce non-interstate collisions? I mean, we have a four-way stop now. What is the idea for something like that for the grant?
We haven't actually talked about it. There is a map that shows non-interstate collisions and that intersection is actually listed in the PennDOT mapping. So we put that in there. Al and I did not talk about what kind of, any kind of remediation there. Quite frankly, I think if we were to do something like that, roundabout is a good choice there. For the main reason, you're taking thirty-two conflict points and you're making it eight. So you're reducing that. I don't know that that's specifically for this particular grant though.
Well, all right. Looking from a cost perspective, the three things that jumped down as I went through this list were Larkin, Bethel and Chitchester Avenue pedestrian enhancements. We already have been applying the money to the upgrades to, you know, all of them. And we, one of the issues that came up was PennDOT can't touch our property when they're doing the three twenty-two project because that is not because of the means that the board previous took on property. So plus, if we want to do pedestrian enhancements there, that's gonna end up falling. Additional pedestrian enhancements, building on the Chitchester Avenue Streetscape, that would most likely be in the downtown area. We're trying to. Area. And then others, this high school entrance, right in, right out. Driving that quite frequently, I would say, wow, if we had another lane on the right hand side, we'd be able to get into the high school there.
So knowing it's only about a hundred, I'm just saying, the grant's probably top a hundred thousand hours. I mean, in my opinion, we just hit two on the head, the Larkin Road pedestrian enhancement, what we could get out of that now. And at the same time, like you said, that extra lane to get into the high school, so you keep the traffic flow straight. And I mean, a hundred thousand is a nice number, but looking at the projects, it's like money's, it's gonna be a lot more.
I can also tell you that there were some municipal. Let me say this. Philadelphia County received seven point six million dollars for thirty-five intersections that they were putting roundabouts. So the money's out there. I wouldn't, if you think that there is something there that is worthwhile, there were some hundred and fifty, two hundred, they weren't as prevalent as the fifty thousand, seventy thousand, the eighty thousand dollar because municipalities were looking at just doing some traffic signal upgrades. So they were, they were, I think, probably beneficial to that municipality, but it was a small amount that they had to be awarded.
But we, I mean, we could go high and then, I mean, between the two I just mentioned and then the traffic light that was put in back in Happy Harry's time. I mean, that thing's so outdated. I mean, you keep little projects like that, we might get lucky and get all three. I don't know how much enhancement you have on a plan for Larkin and Chitchester Avenue. Is it going up towards, is it the sidewalk, walking up on Bethel Avenue or is it along Chitchester Avenue's side or Larkin Road's side? I don't know.
Right, so the DCD grant that Brian had just submitted as well, the thirty-first, he submitted that, has the walkway all the way around the CBL fields is going to be done and the ADA ramp at the intersection. So that piece is, it will be completed. It won't, it, it should then tie in with whatever it is that Benish is doing, their design work for three twenty-two. And that was after conversations that we had with Al last time we met, that he would be able to mesh the two projects together. So that's definitely what you might want to think about doing. Years ago, we did an eggs grant to get a walkway from St. John Fisher when we had St. John Fisher put the walkway in as part of their life center project. Take that all the way down to Fury Road. We can do pedestrian signals so that people can cross safely. So there's warning signals and crosswalks and other things that would be part of that enhancement.
Any comments, anybody? Beneficial for everybody, yeah.
I don't know if the boards, I don't know where we stand with the Meeting House Road issue, George. We haven't moved forward with that. We were talking about site elevations and.
I can give you an update on that. Our office has provided Al with some plan, base plan. He's marking it up. He told me today that they needed to get back to Dan Archdeacon from my office who's doing design work. Danny has already put together cost estimates for the speed humps, the locations and what it would cost to do those as well as the mini roundabout that would propose. So we're somewhere right now. He hasn't reviewed those with Al. We want to make sure that what Al's looking at in his design for the traffic calming is part of that, the estimates that we've done. Dan sent those over to Al Federico. Al's gonna talk to him tomorrow. So I should by the next meeting have some idea of the costs that we can move forward and just sketch a, this is what we're.
What part of Meeting House is that?
This is, as you come straight out of Delaware, I think this is on, so, yeah, they're really picking me up. It's as you come out of Delaware and you come off that hump down to Meeting, you know, you're on Meeting House Road. Well, significantly before the bridge. The first block there is the thirty-two hundred block of Meeting House Road. One person has been hit, their house has been hit two or three times. Two, I believe, within the last year. You know, and we can't control drunk drivers, but we could perhaps make it a little more difficult for them to actually take off and, you know, they come off that and they're picking up speed and they're thirty-five in Delaware and we're twenty-five on Meeting House Road. No one slows down and we did a traffic study and we have some significant issues, you know, not. What was the one, seventy-seven miles an hour, I think, one or two people, you know, like you always have your outliers. But, and most of the traffic seems to be, you know, within a ten mile parameter. But there is, there are significant issues there and there's damage to people's houses, which is why we were looking into it. So that would be one of the ones that I'd be particularly interested in. And we have contact, and I know Al has contacted Delaware and they seem to be agreeable to perhaps lowering their speed on, I guess it's Carter Road there, you know, to twenty, or at least consider moving the speed so that, you know, people aren't coming from thirty-five and hitting a downslope and not slowing down.
Any other comments from anybody? I mean, I think you have a pretty good list, Lisa, that we could compile together and get out. I mean, it's gotta be like yesterday. You can't have more than one project that's in order and or the biggest to the smallest. We can't link any of these roads together to make it one thing.
We're starting some sort of a list of potential projects that we've.
The one I'd like to see is connecting from where Maple Zone was built back to Fury Road, but that would be, that would definitely be over a hundred grand.
Yeah, that one kind of stood out to me too. Trichester Avenue Walkway from St. John Fisher to Fury Road. Only concern is we don't want to get rid of three twenty-two bridge. We can look at it.
I see a guy do it on a wheelchair all the time. It makes me nervous every time I see him.
And then Commissioner Black's point, you can do it from Maple Zone because we are. Here as to what's going to happen.
On that bridge.
On the bridge and then the development.
How about Fury Road itself, some type of walkway? Because you've got all the kids on skateboards coming to get down and, you know what I mean? People, like people from my neighborhood, walk across Chitchester Avenue to come down here and do stuff.
So the other thing that you could look at would be to put pedestrian crossings, big crossings that aren't the signalized intersections, so you don't have that issue. Although I will tell you, I was out today and I watched somebody go past the crosswalk in the middle of the street and came so close. I wanted to bring her back after she ran the rest of the way across the street because there's no reason for where she crossed. She just wanted to cross that direction, almost that. I don't know how you stop that. It is something that you could look at. The other thing we had talked about is the audible signals, pedestrian signal. Past signals, Autozone put the audible in toward the signals. They did. Wawa put them in, start doing those in all of the intersections that have pedestrian processes. So that's another one. And that one, we can say, we can actually say that we have two intersections that are complete. We want to do.
Four or five more.
And that's to George's point that we're continuing a program and this is gonna help us complete that program.
Well, you heard everything. I mean, I mean, it makes sense what George said about continuing something and like Lisa just said, continue to audible walking and all that. But we'd love to be able to piggyback a lot of it.
We can give you a final answer next week if it's due June thirtieth or you need it sooner.
Yeah, if we have an idea before that, I'd like to get that pre-scoping form in. Because I don't know how long they'll have it.
How about the audible, like you said, they have the audible at Mill and Chi, Chi and Meenan House. Where the Streetscape's all been done in the Coles Ward, there's crosswalks and stuff. Is there any signals to be added, added just for the crosswalks on this grant? Because we're continuing down to our Streetscape and come back up to Larkin Road that way?
You could do like, you get out front of the firehouse.
And it wouldn't have an aisle.
That's been hit already again.
I know, it's.
And Wawa, so I was like, forget it. All right, well, try to get something for George and Lisa so we can get this together. So like she says, just script the gap out.
Can you highlight, George, can you highlight which ones would be continuation? So for example, the additional pedestrian enhancements or the Streetscape like that would be one? Right, yeah, can you tell us which ones?
The additional pedestrian enhancement on Chi Avenue Streetscape.
Okay.
I would say that that last one is really up in the air because of the whole thing in that.
That's what I was thinking. Well, we have the one grant for four fifty-two. They had the four fifty-two on the northbound I- ninety-five in their plans. And hopefully we have our letter, I was gonna ask that question, if that letter's going after them for the support letter. But I think if we let that one be because it's already, two projects already working on it. Our grant and their project, so.
I would expect that if we put the scoping form in for that, all of us is the one who's going to go scoping for it. He said our Green Lake Go to consultant and really. For that project to see does it fit in. So I don't know how far we can get with this.
Everybody good? Thank you.
I have one question. We're off that subject. I saw your letter about them doing the work over Creekside without pre-inspection or anything. Could you update me?
Yeah, I actually went over there this morning. I should have waited till the afternoon to see how it was working. Everything looks pretty good. There are some tired, some ruts along the side of the one hundred or one thousand building that I believe he needs to resolve still. And there's one area that is the second house, second house in from the end of one thousand building that seems to be holding water. That was muddy and the rest of it was dry. So I need to talk to Jack and get that resolved. But it's seeded. He's got everything restored. The plantings, I have a feeling that the HOA made some changes to the plantings. They did put the Leland spruce in that I asked them and there's some other plants that weren't on the plan. But it looks, it looks pretty good.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the engineer? If not, we'll move along to the solicitor report. Mike Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll have a written report for you next week. Just a couple of items on the agenda. The manager asked me to take a look at the possibilities of doing a long-term lease for the library in anticipation of their receipt of the money related to a land lease. I believe that we can probably fashion something to do it. I understand that it is to be contingent upon them putting the building there and putting the building up. And if not, then the lease becomes null and void. That's gonna be a little trickier, but I think we can put something in there to take care of that. And I will begin to work on that and see what I can put together as far as draft is concerned. Somerset drainage issue, I really reported on that already. That's where we are. CSX US three twenty-two, we received the letter of. We received the letter of a petition for reconsideration, I assume, from CSX over the decision from the PUC. We have several options. We can do, nothing, let the PUC handle it. Reconsiderations are generally not granted, but if the township wishes for us to intervene, we can file a petition to intervene and be notified of any, any further developments and interject what our position is. I know the township's position is they want to keep this moving and getting things squared away. If that's what you want to do, I just need an authorization next week to file a petition to intervene and to present any evidence or any commentary from the township. Other than that, everything is pretty much in order. We have had, not had any additional hearings or anything in district court. So we're, we're moving along on those. Other than that, everything's in order, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mike, would that help us to do it, to intervene with the CSX to knowing that this, we want this project to keep?
Yeah, I mean, you can certainly, yeah, you can certainly send a letter even without a formal intervention. And, and I would suggest we even do that either way, would be to send a letter at least indicating to the PUC that we wish this project to move forward and to stand by their decision. They will make that part of the record without a formal intervention because we have, we have been getting notified and we are kind of parties on that. But if you want me to do a formal intervention, I can do that as well. But I certainly have no problem starting off just sending a letter from the township indicating what our position is to the PUC under that docket and file it with the secretary. And then if we need to go further on, unfortunately, this is like a long drawn out process, but you know, we can, we can take further action if you want, but the quickest and easiest way to do is just to send a letter directly to the PUC related to that.
Do we have to vote on that next week?
I don't even know that. I mean, you can, you know, I would just put together, you know, a brief resolution saying, you know, wish to, the, expressing the township's position related to the continuation and the furtherance of the project for the bridges.
Reading that docket, is that the main concern is a stormwater being onto their property? And between their engineers and Penn Dot's engineers, nobody could kind of, I mean, I don't want us to intervene that far because it's like we shouldn't have to have our engineer figure out that issue.
My issue is that bridge has been condemned. That's why they were gonna jump it in front of our section. Are we liable if anything happens on that bridge because of that? Because that could be our argument.
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
I mean, I'm just sitting here thinking. That bridge has been condemned and they're prolonging fixing it. What if something happens?
I think it's a state bridge, I think so. Really our bridges if we're.
I'd like to know that if you could find out if we would be held any liability.
Well, you know, they're gonna draw a sweeping. It's gonna be everybody in no matter what happens, so you know. The answer is probably, the answer is probably not, but that's not gonna prevent somebody from trying.
That adds to our argument why it needs to be done.
We'll make sure your name's on there first. No, you're right. And he's right. So you see the township, the name's in there no matter what you do.
And, and just to, just to advise, I will not be at next week's meeting, but Mr. Hughes from my office or Mr. Van Wyk will be here. I have to go to the bench bar conference, so.
Does anybody got anything else for the solicitor?
The library lease, is that something that we're gonna be voting on next week or just you're just preparing a draft? The library lease, is that something that we're gonna be voting on next week?
It's not gonna be next week, no, but I'm gonna work on a draft of that. Because they need that before they get their funding, so. We already voted to lease them the land. It's just a matter of, they needed documentation to back that up.
Just need the lease drawn up.
Part of, part of the requirements that they grant is that they have a formal.
Control over the property.
Control of the property.
So it's not, all right, I misunderstood then. I thought it was a lease that we were going to draft a, a new lease with them.
Not a, not a new lease, no. It would be just a contingency.
I just think at a minimum, one of the things maybe to put in there is that there'll be no additional tax on their pay, no more funding coming from taxpayer money. I don't know if you would put that in the lease, that's something that you would do.
We could discuss that because that's, that's the land you're leasing, you're not. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, a long-term lease would be a dollar for a hundred years or whatever. It's not something that we're using taxpayers' money to.
No, what I'm saying is if we're going to lease it and they fall short of raising the two million.
The lease is void.
The lease is void, that's the, that's the issue.
Right. Okay. Right, I just wanna, I think, I think we're all in agreement that we're not gonna be giving any more money if, if, if they fall short. Okay. Thank you, Nicole.
Any other, excuse me, any other questions for the solicitor? Now we'll move on to the manager's report.
Good evening, everybody. The first item I have is Caitlin Hill has accepted the condition offer, offer for employment as administrative assistant finance clerk. As you remember, Caitlin was a intern with us over the winter and she is a recent graduate of Bloomsfield University with a degree in finance. You have in your packet a draft resolution from the Heart and Soul Committee. One of these action items required of them in section four, which is what we're in right now, is for the board to formally recognize the value statements. So the, we were given a couple of different samples and I kind of concocted something based off those samples that would state that the board has, recognizes that these value statements are, you know, derived from this community planning process. So there was a couple of changes from the committee, so it's in draft form as I'll be getting some stuff back. We've been getting a lot of requests from food trucks recently. It seems like that this is a business that's starting to, to, to come to fruition here. We have two new food trucks going through their approval process to, to start the, they're signing up as home-based businesses, but they're also looking for then locations to land their food truck. So we had this Rolling Fatties food truck has come to us and asked if the board would entertain some type of waiver. So the, the communication from them was, look, we have a significant upfront outlay to purchase the truck. We'd love to, we want to operate in Upper Chichester. However, the, is there any way to get a break on some of the, the upfront fees? So what they were asking for was some waivers from the, the food truck fee and from the health inspection fee because even though we are party to this lawsuit with the county, food trucks are still, we are finding food trucks are still getting themselves licensed through, through the health department because they're operating it in all these municipalities. Some of them are under the jurisdiction of the health department. So I told the applicant that I would give you guys their email, which they had sent where they're requesting something and see if the board was interested in doing anything. I'd be happy to take any questions, comments, concerns throughout the week, or if you have any now, we can do that. Next item, item number four. Jake Breaks was something that has been brought up a couple of different times with this board. So previously, we had submitted some roads to Penn Dot for analysis and Penn Dot had responded with allowing for them on Mill Road. Subsequent to that, the state representative went to, back to Penn Dot and they have since allowed for the prohibition to exist on three twenty-two. So I think it might be in the best interest of the township to resubmit to Penn Dot to see if they've changed their opinion on some of the slopes on some of these roadways. So if you could please get together, if it's from the original list, if you want to resubmit that, or if you have anything else that you've seen that you'd like to submit, we can absolutely submit that to Penn Dot and seek that out. Pennsylvania Municipal League has reached out. They're in conjunction with the Pennsylvania Economy League are working on a municipal taxation study. As we heard earlier tonight, there is a growing percentage of the population that feel that taxation and the way taxation is in Pennsylvania is not appropriate for, for the residents and for funding in the future. So they, they are looking for municipalities to be part of this case study where they will evaluate our revenue sources and determine if they're, what plausible options either exist, what plausible options could exist by the Pennsylvania Economy League and the Municipal League lobbying the legislator to change the tax laws. I believe the, the only other municipality that I know for a fact has signed up so far is City of Pittsburgh. So it's municipalities of different size throughout the state. We've also indicated that we would like to be part of this. I was contacted by the Delaware County Executive Director's Office about the township being part of a grant application that they are submitting to the Government Finance Officials' Association called Putting Assets to Work Incubator. It is a program in which they evaluate underutilized real estate assets of local governments and through a process of evaluation, determine if there's any way to be able to put that to a better use, albeit leasing or some type of mechanism. So in speaking with the county, they needed some municipal partners. The municipal partners will, will be, will receive a, at the end of the day, a report of all of the parcels that they own within the township on a GIS map, as well as some recommendations on various parcels as potential opportunities to leverage those parcels to generate revenue for their municipality. We were also reached out to by the Delaware County Planning Department to see if we would be interested in being party to a grant application that they are submitting with the Federal Highway Administration. As you know, the, the infrastructure bill came out with, you know, a lot of money to go to various municipalities, governments to help fund infrastructure projects. Been attending a lot of the webinars and it's a rather convoluted process where we sometimes fall in the maybe we'd qualify, sometimes we fall in that we won't qualify. This program, because the county is representing five hundred thousand people, they, they qualify for this, but they need, obviously they don't own roadways, so they need municipalities to be, you know, party to the application. So this is the, the Safe Streets for All Grant Program. It's a, it's like a vision zero. So the Federal Highway Administration has this program out that they would like to get to zero fatalities on the roadways, pedestrian vehicle, all of that. So this program would be the, putting together the action item list. So an action item list is needed to be able to benefit from the infrastructure dollars for construction projects. The action item list would be a list of actions that can take place to fix areas in your municipality that either have high fatality rates or, or high accident rates. As you know, we've been, we've benefited from a couple of highway safety improvement projects from Penn Dot because unfortunately, we have some intersections and some areas with high fatality rates. So I think this would be a good program for us to get involved with, with them as well. Number eight on my list is the Twin Oaks Planning Charette. Last year when we adopted the, the capital budget, there was conversation that we were going to look at a kind of slightly different way of planning. Typically, planning exercises take, you know, a year to a year and a half and we come out with these rather large documents that dictate a whole bunch of more plans that need to happen or a lot of very high level expensive projects. And we found that when we look at that, it's really hard to pick them off in our like general fund budget and, and we look at it and say, okay, how do we, this is gonna take, you know, ten, fifteen years to do the studies and to get up the funding to do big projects like this. So we're working on this project. It is a really quick, high intensity planning process in which right now there's about eight planners from the Delaware County Planning Department, our township engineer, traffic engineer, township planner, myself and a group involved in this process where we are getting into, at this point, the Twin Oaks neighborhood, going through various different disciplines, open space, traffic, stormwater, housing, zoning, and looking at these in a very hyper concentrated, lots of people working together, throwing around ideas to come up with a plan that lasts between four to eight years and that can be accomplished by our general fund, fund dollars. So that is, we're, we're like a test pilot for this project. We're gonna, it's taking place the third week in June. We've sent out some, some surveys to get some information back from the, the residents there already to help with the, the onset of this process. And the culmination of this project will be a, at the Juneteenth celebration, the planners and Heart and Soul will be there with various options of things that the planners have come up with and residents will have an opportunity to provide feedback on which ones they believe kind of is what they're looking for in their community. If this model works and we can pull this off, it's a very cost-effective way for planning and also a very good way to get plans done very quickly, which will help us with grant applications and help us utilize our dollars as well. We'd like to continue to do this in the other areas throughout the township. And then under other, your report, you have the Planning Commission's annual report. I apologize, there was some confusion over the past month between what was the draft and what was the final copy, so this didn't get to you last month, but it's here for approval this month. Any question?
Thank you. Any questions for the manager?
Yes.
So I guess my question would be, what is, do they have a schedule? How often do they anticipate being in the municipality in the township?
So they don't have any of that worked out. What they're stating at this point is that they'd like to be, this to be their permanent location and then to be able to ancillary go to other events, you know, so have a, have a spot here, which they're working on securing. They, we've put them in contact with a couple of private landowners. We've also talked to them about some spaces that are available, which would be public spaces that would qualify based off of our ordinance. So, but most likely with these food trucks right now, what we're hearing from them is they make their real money off of private parties and big food truck festivals, so they will be bouncing around. However, they want to pay, they want to pay some simulation of the fee because they want to use Upper Chi, they're from Upper Chichester, they believe that this is where they want to root their business. And so we're, we're starting to see like this kind of, like a food truck renaissance looking to kind of come to the Boothwind Town Center area, so.
Do we have an ordinance for locations for them, you know?
Yep.
So then I guess then my follow-up question would be regarding the health, the food, the inspection with us being. Correct, thank you. Not, not a part of the health department and then us accepting their.
Yep, my recommendation would be that if we do consider anything with this, that the board absolutely, we should have an inspection of the vehicle and, and that's, that, a health inspection. You know, in, again, so like looking at it from a business perspective, they're not paying the taxes that businesses pay, right?
Right.
So they don't have that sunk cost of the, the real estate taxes. However, to purchase a, a truck is a very high upfront expense. So my thought would be if you do something like this, is the way our ordinance reads right now, when they pay, they pay for an annual fee, right? So maybe if we could work out something where if someone comes in at month six, we prorate it. So the waiver would be prorated that they pay from now till December or pay monthly now through December and then the annual would become.
But where can they operate?
You're not for the month, the monthly fee, but the monthly fee was set at higher, a higher amount.
So what if they don't, if they're not here as of January one each year, then automatically you would prorate it. You have the option of prorate.
They would have to, yeah, they would have to pay whenever they come back. If like they say, we're not gonna get that, we're gonna just come back. Yes.
Right. So they wouldn't be paying the full fifteen hundred, for example, if they started this year?
The, the way the ordinance reads, yes, they would pay for an annual. The way the ordinance reads, yes, they would pay for an annual.
But you're saying if they start in July, then they would pay from July to December.
Yeah, at this point, you could go on a case-by-case basis through a waiver, or we could go back to that and see what we can tweak in there. But I think from right now, kind of what we're hearing is, hey, it'd be a lot easier if we could either just pay for the months, like a prorated half the year, and then pick up our annual in January as opposed to paying for a year out the gate.
Oh, right.
But originally, we put them, made them fees that high to discourage them.
Well, to balance it. And I think you still need to have that balance, right? So like, you know, the, you don't want to create it, government shouldn't create, shouldn't affect competition, right? So, you know, if we're creating an unfair advantage for one type of business over another type of business, that's not good government. So I think our policy is good government. And I think granting some type of waiver where we say like, look, you pay for the six months and then your annual will start in January. I don't think that that is any, too far off of someone purchasing a property. When they purchase a property, the taxes are prorated based off of the amount of months that they're there, you know?
Right. In other municipalities, the food truck fees are a lot higher, more expensive. So $1,500 for the year is...
So you would have to redo this for next week if we come up with some kind of solution beforehand?
No, I think that this was their request. You can go back with anything. I mean, I, we can go back to them and tell them this is what the board's willing to do.
I think if they want to come in for a certain duration, like a half a year, then we can, I mean, I'd be willing to prorate it. That's...
Yeah, I think we should definitely prorate it. You shouldn't pay for the whole year if you aren't here, so.
I don't have any problem with prorating the fee, but I think from the tone of this letter, they're looking for a permanent reduction.
I agree. And I did have a conversation with them after this letter that I did not feel that that was something that would be, be tangible. And they also said, you know, barring out this discussion goes, they would be happy to come in and talk about their business and how they, you know.
And I do, I do agree even with Joe was saying, and you echoed it, we need to inspect it too, or earn help. We have to.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. I would say no waiver on the health and then prorate the rest of the year.
Everybody good?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, because whatever we do for them, every other one that comes in is going to want to say.
Well, we got to make it...
So we need to say.
We're not reducing the fee, we're just, we're just prorating it. So it's, so we're not, so it's going to be standard.
Anything else to be brought to attention, the manager?
Have you gotten any surveys back yet?
Yes, we put out, actually about close to 200 surveys that went out. It's surprising how many actual houses are back when you, when you print them all out. But we've gotten about 45 back so far, and the past couple of days have been quite a few, so we've got a pretty good feedback.
Okay, good. Thanks. That's all I have. Thank you.
If not, we'll move along to the commissioners' reports. Move to Madam Vice President, Cole Wicker.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So the library, so we discussed the, the lease. The other op, the other item that was brought to our attention is that they need a guarantee, a gra, guar, a grantor, is it? Grantee, thank you. A grantee. So Betsy sent us an email, George, she sent an email to you also with, I asked her to provide us with some details on what that entails. Do you have that, George? So there's a series of items, a series of things that have to be done to, along with the RACP grant.
You need a, either redevelopment authority, industrial development authority, local, local development district, public authority, local government, yada, yada, yada. Any of these can serve as the grantee or the applicant. We serve as a pass-through entity for the purposes of the R cap grant.
Right.
The applicant submits everything, we're, we're the flow through.
But what's the responsibility for the grantee? It's just a name only, or?
So we would sign the, we would sign the documents, like, with the, as the grantee, and then the money, I believe, would come to us and we would then have to give it to them.
For the, from the state?
Right. Because we have like the paperwork all filed with the state to be able to receive the funds.
With the 2 million.
Right. The 2 million, not the money that they raise, just the grant money from the state.
Mr. Clark, this is a reimbursement. The RACP grant, you will not be receiving $2 million. So when, when it comes time to pay whatever it is you put in your cost estimate, there's a business plan, and that's what they're trying to complete right now.
Right.
That business plan has to include contracts and cost estimates and cash flow to, it's a lot that goes into it. But once you start spending money, you can then ask for reimbursement. I believe that reimbursement needs to come through Upper Chichester Township, too, and then it would flow to the library or whatever bill that is.
Does that have to be paid first before reimbursement, or they submit to them through us as a grantee?
No, that would have to be paid first. Though I had this conversation with Dawn Daniels or Betsy, that we've got to look at some kind, I don't want to call it a swing loan, but they will need money upfront in order to make sure that as you pay, as they pay bills, that they can get reimbursed for it. The first reimbursement usually takes about 16 weeks.
So we would have to pay for anything and then get repaid?
Well, theoretically, if they raise $1 million, okay, it then becomes a rolling thing. Like, they, they incur a bill for $250,000 they submitted.
Right.
They paid out of their cash, then we would get paid back. We would give it back to them so that they're home. I mean, it's just accounting.
We don't, we don't spend, we receive.
Right.
How the, just, since we're talking about cash, how does the value of the land work into cash? Can somebody explain that to me?
So I don't think it, I don't think that it, it goes into like the match, right? So there's a dollar amount, so the survey is done, there's a dollar amount attached to it. So just like if we get, if someone gave $100 and they're saying, oh, the value of this wood that we're donating is $100, right? So it's, it's the value of it that goes into the estimate. Is that correct, Lisa?
I kind of get that, but I guess what I'm saying is, what's tangible? You know, if they need to raise 2 million and they're saying that the land is worth a certain amount, but that's not liquid cash where they can turn around and pay bills with.
Yeah, it's not cash. So it's used as a match to say, this is, this has value, and because it has value, we'll give you, the state says, we'll give you the match of it. So at the end of the day, let's say, let's, let's just say, let's just say the grant was for, you know, the, the property is five, let's just say it's 500,000, right? And they raised, they quote-unquote raised that a million dollars, it could be 500,000 in cash. So they wouldn't have $2 million to do a project with, they'd have 1.5 million to do a project.
So, but basically, they'll get the 2 million from the grant once they raise 2 million?
No, they got it.
Correct. Yes, in theory, yes.
They don't get it unless they raise the other hand.
They don't get any reimbursements.
They're sitting at how much now?
Um, I think a million.
Roughly, ballpark. So they got to raise another million, say.
Six months.
In six months.
Right.
And if they don't do it in six months, is there any extension or anything?
Yes.
Other possibilities?
You can ask the office of project, the company's office of project, for six months.
What did the time clock start?
And so we, it started May 11th, I believe.
May 11th.
Somewhere around there. I think it's May 11. We are waiting for, so we have several grants out there. One in particular is from Senator Casey's office, for a million dollars. So they called for some additional information from, from us. So we are hopeful that we'll get that. And then, you know, we'll be done. But otherwise, we have six months to raise the additional million.
They're trying to get an additional million from Casey?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you for answering the questions.
Yep.
I'm getting asked these questions, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, no.
I don't know all the answers.
But I will say one thing, I do tell people this, that they're doing their damnedest of trying every which way to get their money. So it's not like they're not doing it and reaching out. Just receiving a $2 million grant was an accomplishment. And if they're at 1.1 now, they're 900 away. Even if they had to ask for another six months, I think, I got enough confidence to, they're going to pull it off somehow, some way. But yeah, I think the concerns, and you hear it out there, and we all do, how much more are we paying? How much are taxpayers paying? What money? There was a concern that we're paying the bills upfront and then they get reimbursed. And Joe explained it, no, they, they have their 2 million, they'll use their 2 million first and be reimbursing more than middleman. That's all it is. So that's all they're asking as a grantee. Sorry about that.
No, no, thank you. So, so that would be, do we need a vote for that? Do we need a vote for that?
I think we'll probably do a motion next week.
Okay. Officially, okay.
Just in case they want something on record.
That we serve as a grantee. Okay, thank you. There's, they are getting ready for their summer camp in partnership with the township, with the township as well. They did receive the additional grant from the Delaware County Foundation. I believe they received one last year for 5,000. This year, we received one for 7,000. And then myself and Dawn and Betsy actually attended this, the fifth anniversary of the Delaware County Foundation, which was a really nice event. We met with a lot of donors, potential donors there. So we'll see how that goes. So again, the, the summer camp is, it was, it's, we had to cut off registration. So there are 61 campers, 10 counselors. Summer camp is going to go through June 27 through July 29. As George mentioned regarding the Twin Oaks Planning Project, we are going to have a Juneteenth celebration in Twin Oaks on June 17. It's going to be from 5:00 to 9:00. You have the, you have a copy of the flyer, at which time we will discuss the plans. We did it on a Friday, we tried to get it in, it's kind of last minute, so it'll be our first time. We'll see how it turns out. Hopefully, going forward, if we move it around to different parks in the township, we can try to shoot for Saturday. That'd probably, probably work better. So we'll see how that goes. The Lion King trip is coming up, it's actually this Saturday. There are 53 people attending. The bus will be leaving here at 9:00 AM and returning at 9:00 PM. Be leaving here from the municipal building. George already mentioned the resolution for the Heart and Soul Committee. I actually met Rick, Rick Patello, was it Rick Patello, from DCD, at a conference last week, and he came up to introduce himself, you know, probably, people meet some people, you know, you meet people all, all the time. So he didn't remember me. I was like, actually, you know, we've met, I've been to a couple, you know, conferences. But then as soon as I mentioned Upper Chi, he was like, oh, yeah, Upper Chi, he's in the Heart and Soul. So it was, it was good that they, they, he might not know me, but he knew that we had the Heart and Soul project here in Upper Chi. So that's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention of the commissioner, whatever. If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Jim Neri.
Thank you, sir. The financial reports and the police report will be available next week. We'll have the list of bills and the trash refunds. I see there's one anyway. The, and the other thing that I want to mention, and I mentioned it to George, is now that the census has been completed and reported and the legislative maps have been adopted, I think we should reconsider again redistricting in the township. We could, you know, and open it up to anything, you know, five wards, seven wards, I, you know, I don't have, as I won't be running, again, I have no dog in the fight. So I'm just trying to make it more equitable, where one commissioner is not representing 30% of the population, which is not the purpose of one man, one vote. So I gave George a brochure, and he has contacted a company that does it, that, you know, can, can do it with a minimum, or we could use Lisa's office again. I have no problem with that. I just would like to have this done at some point in time. And that's all I have.
Yeah, I'd like to make the ca, I mean, we... We're so close. I mean, I don't know if there's other company. I mean, I think the latest map, we keep going back to almost the very first one. And I don't think we're ever going to get as close unless we change it up and go seven wards. Think about it. George, get the information that Mr. Neri gave you. See what it would cost, vice versa. Even just for where we were at, I think it's one or two streets in Nicole's and Joe's ward that is the difference. That's all it is. And if we get some different eyes, they might be able to adjust it for us.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know if it wasn't, if it moved any or if it's been changed.
Well, the, the, the one big issue that we had was the fact that was part of this was in 159. Now we're on 159, so we really have a wide-open picture as to how we could redraw the maps. I mean, you could draw the maps completely differently. You could add two, four commissioners, you know, whatever you want to do. I just want to move it ahead so that it becomes...
The stereo will have to change, too.
Well...
Should be easier. That's the question. Not to cut anybody off, but that's, maybe we can, we don't have the answer tonight, but maybe Mike can look into it. Do we have to follow anything that they're doing, the magistrado maps?
Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our responsibility, and this was the issue we raised with Frank when, when he was doing, our responsibility is to meet our responsibility. The other entities have to weigh in at some point, but we can't, first of all, you know, like the, one of the issues is the school board, okay? I think the population has changed and the areas, the regions are not as equitable as they were when, when Judge Battle put the original plan in 30 years ago. So I think that there, you know, that's another issue for the school board. It's not our issue. I think our issue is to address our problem.
Well, I know we did it once and we took it to the end and it died in the court, so we'll, we'll see what happens.
One of the reasons it died is because we tried to tell them how to, how to realign. Yeah, we did.
Joe, I said, we'll see how it goes again. Well, I'm not, I'm not opposing it. I'm just saying, we'll see how it goes.
Anything else that would be brought to the attention of Commissioner Neri? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Michael Guardios.
Thank you. Planning, you see all the applications that we have. Everything has, we have extension letters for most of them. Two items, the goat farm, which we affectionately call 4800 Chichester Avenue, as I indicated, they came into the construction committee meeting. We developed a letter for them that came out of that meeting. And as I indicated, there was, there were some priorities they wanted the township to look at. And if my memory serves me correctly, there was a fire lane going around the entire perimeter of the building, a buffer wall to be constructed to block the sides, to block the views from the houses to the new warehouse. Another option, another priority was widening the entrance to Creek Way, where Walmart's at. And another one was relocating the farmhouse and reusing the existing barn materials to incorporate that with the new structures that they are building. To make note on the farmhouse, when they say relocate the farmhouse, their intentions was to make sure that it was structurally sound. When they route, when they relocated it, they weren't going to per se do a full-blown renovation to it. They had indicated if they had a tenant that was interested, then they would proceed with a full restoration of the house. I know those two items went to the Historical Society. Um, I know those two items went to the Historical Society for review, so I believe we, did we send them the letter yet, George, or Lisa? Yes.
Yes.
So I guess my question is, you know, like, should the board review the letter to see what they think is a priority for, for, for them to be done? Or, okay. Right, okay. Um, if you're interested in reading the copy of the letter, please contact George, and he will, um, give you a copy, um, all my reports are on file. Uh, another, um, extension that we have is for six fifty Cherry Tree Road. We either have to make a decision or, or accept their plan by July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. My understanding is that they were supposed to submit new plans, uh, but they have not to date. So regardless, next month, um, we have to make a decision of, um, whether not to grant approval, or hopefully they will submit a new set of plans for us to review. And then lastly, uh, thirty thirty-three Marcus Street, they'll be going before the zoning board for a variance. They are looking for a variance, um, for, um, a driveway setback. Right now, the minimum is two hundred and fifty feet from an intersection, they have less than that. I'm not too sure what the exact distance is, but they're going, uh, before the board to seek a, they, they're going before the zoning board to seek a waiver, and that's the same, um, applicant, uh, as for forty-eight hundred Chatchester Avenue. They are both the same developers, it's, uh, allies partners, I believe. And thank you to George for helping me, um, derive that letter for Peach Street, Plum Street, the Gardendale section, and that will be getting out next week, just wanted to say thank you. I don't have anything else, anybody has any questions for me?
And, um, the one on the thirty thirty-three, isn't there a driveway there already for that property, Lisa? Do you know, that's like, do you know if there's a driveway there already? Yeah, I thought they
Yeah.
Right. Are they moving the
When we met out there, we were asking that our question to
Yeah, it's also a subdivision plan, so the driveway that's currently there on the, we'll call that the south side of the intersection, would exist for the property that currently exists, they're subdividing off the, the parcel that would be, I, I call it Farmer John's, but I think that's the wrong name, the, uh, the nursery that used to be there.
Right.
Was a Farmer John's.
Now, your, your six fifty Cherry Tree, is that the one in your ward?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there, is there a plan already submitted for here?
So last time I spoke to Matt Goodman, he told me that there was a new plan that they were going to present to the planning board. Going to be submitted, and then withdraw this plan.
So if we don't grant them, if we deny everything, they gotta start fresh, they have to start fresh.
They had a lot of landlock issues with that previous plan.
But then we, they were trying to sell the lots before, and if they was here, so, I, I mean, do we, do we, would it be a good recommendation just to shoot this one down?
I think you could probably, you could probably put four, maybe five houses there, well, decently, they want to put ten, I mean.
Let's think, well, they're supposed to, they were supposed to submit a new set of plans, they have not, so if they haven't, then we should, yeah. You know, we can make a decision on our plans that they, that, that they have.
Right.
Which is what you're saying.
Right, I just don't want to keep extending if the, the plan never gets to us. Uh, I think it was at forty-eight hundred, uh, that one, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get a copy of that, or take a look at that, George, when you get a chance, that's all I want. Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Guardiosa? And that, we're moving along to Commissioner Biaco.
Thank you. Um, time to start negotiating with the, uh, Highway and Sanitation Department, uh, me and George are talking, probably, but get that started by next month at the latest. We'll, we'll start making appointments with them, and who's the committee gonna be?
Anybody want to help?
It's
It used to be you and I, but anybody else, I don't have.
I'm fine.
Step in, I'll still step in and help.
Fine.
If nobody else wants to do it, I'll help if, you know, it doesn't, doesn't have to be me.
You don't want it?
No.
Sure?
All right, me and Joe.
There you go.
I'm, I'm fine with whoever. All right.
Is that okay?
Yeah, so it'll be us three. George, you start, whenever they want to start, we'll get rolling on that. Um, we're still tweaking the, the, the new routes for, uh, trash and, um, recycling. Uh, I'm pretty sure they got what they want, and it's just a matter of figuring out manpower and stuff like that. Um, I think we're gonna have to start discussing going to more men, uh, with, with, you know, you'll see when we present. But, um, that's one of, one of the things we're tweaking, not, not ten guys or nothing, it's like one, two, you know. But I, I think it's time to expand, and we'll do a lot more with the highway guys. We're, we're, we're putting a lot of jobs to, to the side now that we could do in-house, because we don't have enough men. What else did I have? I have, uh, the other discussion I want to get rolling on is the Storm, Stormwater Authority. Combining, starting that with our sewer authority. Um, George has been giving me some good information from other places that have it, and, uh, I, I think, I think it's now. It's time, it's time to start talking about it. Combining our sewer authority with, with the Stormwater Authority, starting the Stormwater Authority to
And, um, Norristown, uh, just went through the process, and I had a lengthy conversation with their, uh, their chief administrative officer about the process, and, and I, a, a lot of what they're doing lines up with kind of like our core values that we had kind of spoken about previously, as how something like that would operate, so.
I mean, I think, what, what's your opinion? Do you, you think it's, it's coming to the where we need to do it?
You may want to start talking to him, Joe.
Oh, I've thrown a couple digs out there, I mean, but, uh, look, like I said, it's, we're gonna come to a point where we're kind of gonna have to do it, and it's, unless you just want to go away and I'll start a new authority, and now they're willing to talk, I'm sure.
Do we, I mean, we as a ward have the authority to dictate that, correct?
Yes. But, but it's time to start looking into all this, that's what I want to do, I mean, unless the board disagrees. Yeah, I, I've been in their ear, they know I'm, that's what I want to do, I mean.
Anything else, Joe?
No, that's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Mr. Biaco? Now, we'll go to my report, uh, the reports will be on file, the emergency management report should be in your file tonight. Uh, just a little confusion, there was an email out there, and we're trying to iron things out, uh, I know George has been talking to Bill Robinson. I confirm the Marcus Hulk EM coordinator and trainer EM coordinator are both the same person. So that's where the confusion was, was coming back and forth for trainer and Marcus Hulk. Um, I do want to put it on record that this is something we, we should be doing, and, and that coordinator will be in June's meeting, so if anybody wants to stop in June thirteenth for the emergency management meeting, uh, as long as we all have three of us there, but they will be there to try to see what they're looking for, what we could accommodate. Um, it's, it's always been easy just, excuse me, to do something, because if you have an event here in Upper Chi, and we need to move somewhere, and vice versa. Um, I think our doors should always be open on both sides, um, and then figure out, I understand the liability and insurance and all that stuff, and that stuff. I think our emergency coordinator and theirs should be able to come up with some recommendations and have the solicitor look at that, make sure everybody's protected. Uh, just pray to God we never have to use it, uh, but you never know, uh, at least, they want to be prepared if something happens, and they have other areas to go to, and vice versa, if we would need a, uh, facility to use down there, so. Uh, that was just a little confusion with them, and hopefully they could settle something out. The other thing that's on my report, I don't understand, I do and I don't, um, the fire department in my email needs to replace some gear. They're purchasing, I think, ten sets themselves at five thousand dollars a pop, and they, they were asking the township if they would mind the purchase, which we used to purchase to fire marshal and the township chief fire gear. Uh, so what they were asking for a little bit of help, so they're not, they're not using auto relief money to purchase three sets of gears for the Upper Chi Chatchester Township Fire Department Township Chiefs that represent us here. The only, the only identification on the chief difference would be a white helmet, because you need somebody for the identification of a chief is usually white. Uh, a lot of the companies are not going white with coats, because it's hard to keep clean. Uh, they do have their own washing machines for their gear and stuff, dryers and stuff, so that used to be sent out all the time, but the fire department's all purchased them throughout, throughout the years. This gear, depending on how much it's used, goes, and Ray could correct me if I'm wrong, is, uh, five to ten years, you know, for replacement. So you, you get thirty guys at five, five thousand dollars a pop, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they had to spend. So what they try to do is, in, in sections, and I know Ogden did it for years, every five years they would replace five sets and replace it, so they weren't, um, they weren't in a position years ago that they could only buy two or three, and that was bad, because they're not made to be fighting fires for twenty years. Uh, and when you start washing them and the protection for the firemen, the vapor liner inside of it, these things weigh twenty, thirty pounds, putting on a coat. Uh, they're not light, but they're there to protect the firemen. So I would still like that to be brought to the table next week for us to be able to purchase them three sets. I don't understand some of the concerns about the money, uh, the concern about the consolidation part. They did, the answer to that question, in my opinion, is they did the hardest part already, the operational, and they're, and, and they're actually falling back on that a little bit, because the guys aren't as active, because some guys have gotten jobs now, and they still need membership. It's not, I know they applied for some grants for some full-time people, they're hoping to get that so they could pay people during the day, or even a nighttime crew, um, I'm not sure if they got that grant, but they do use a relief money for everything else, and if I the consolidation part is at the Attorney General's office, they haven't heard anything. Uh, well, I know all three fire companies had their resolution in the Attorney General's office that was required. Uh, they review it, I don't know if they bring back recommendations, or they just bless it, and then they're, Upper Chi Chatchester Fire Department. I do not have that answer, but it is in the Attorney General's office right now, so. Uh, any other questions on it? I would still like to see that on the table for the three chiefs, uh, to help them out. As I said, we got, I, I, I keep saying we have one point six million dollars coming to us, and we haven't spent a dime, but we have spent a dime, because we, we got capital improvements that are being done, and fifteen thousand dollars to help the fire department. And they come to this board or the next board, and they can't afford that four hundred thousand dollar truck, because they pay for it, so I, I don't, I, I think this is a small monetary that we could support them in, in trying to get this. Uh, it's not like they do not do a program to re, replace our equipment, they replace equipment year after year, hose, everything, air packs. Air packs only last five, ten years, they're, they're three, three to five thousand dollars a pop. So just, a, a lot of money they save us on doing a lot of things, I just want to put it out there that I would like to see this still on the agenda to be able to purchase the three for that, when they do the purchasing for their five, or ten, ten sets of gear, is my fault. Any questions on it? I'll be glad to answer.
They're, they're putting fifty thousand in, correct?
Yes.
Um, how, how much, how much is a regular gear?
That's it, five thousand, five thousand for a complete turnout gear, hat, bunker, bunker pants, coat, and helmet.
Is there any additional cost for being white?
No, I don't think so, but with, there's any difference, they've been finding that out, they just due to what the white helmet is. If it's white, it's identification of who's a chief.
Do, do they have the white helmet now?
Yes.
Isn't that good enough? With the, the white helmet, does the jacket need to be white too?
No, it don't need to be white, but it's no difference of the cost, it's still five thousand dollars. There's a letter, the letter in camp has to be a certain type of letter, so if you're in
I'm sure them helmets have a life
No, they don't either.
They, no, I mean, they're probably no good after so long, is right, that's how a hard hat is, a hard hat's only good for so many years.
How many have you buying?
They're buying, they're buying ten out of their relief
They want us to buy three.
And they're asking us to buy for the chiefs, either the township, or basically the township chiefs for the Upper Chi Chatchester Fire Department.
Uh, at fifteen thousand dollars, we would e, so, I guess, I need to understand how we're doing this, so we could, are we, are we reimbursing their relief, so making, like, are we making a donation to them? Because I, I don't know if you can put constraints on it, like a contr, additional contribution? Or are we physically purchasing the equipment? Because for physically purchasing the equipment, we'd have to make sure it's either a Co-Stars provider, or that we get telephonic bid quotes.
Yeah, I, uh, on that question, I don't have it, but I do know it does have to be going, it has to go through the Relief Association. So I don't know if we as a township, since we're not a relief association, that because that's a protective equipment for them, and that's, that's where they buy all their protective equipment. Right. They are, right, right, well.
And I guess the other question is, you still have three entities that we're making contributions to, so what entity are you making this contribution to?
So what hap, I mean, I'm, I'm just, just thinking, so the following year, you'll, you'll elect a couple new chiefs, do we, do, do, do we again buy three new outfits for them?
They
Do they get fitted out per, per person?
The gear, the gear they replace are usually the top ten, the fifteen people every time they replace it. And if it's all black, and it still says Upper Chi Fire Department on it, if anything changes, your helmet, and they would probably pay for, they will pay for their own helmet out of relief, if that gentleman isn't the same chief anyway. And they, that's why if you stay with the black, everybody's black, and they have to reflect in everything on it, but you just do the helmet.
Yeah, but
Yeah, because your safety, your safety officer has a different thing, your engineers have a different, it's more of an identification out on the field. Yes.
I just think, I mean, we, we should portray to the public that we are, I mean, we, we give the fire companies over three hundred fifty
give the fire companies over 350,000 dollars in allotment. You know, we pay for their gas, we give them ambulance services. So we are helping out the fire companies. I just don't want to make it sound like, honestly, make it sound like we're not, we're not giving them anything.
Why? I just
Well, he said, you know, we'll, we'll give them additional 15,000 or we're giving it like, we are, we are giving them money. I mean, we give them money. We, we give them a, an allotment every year. And if they so choose to, they want to purchase these white helmets with that allotment. I mean, I think, I think we've, we've met our obligations with them.
We're far from meeting our obligation. 31 this year it was. It dropped.
The low 30s.
And I kind of agree, Mr. Neri. I think we need to get the consolidation before we move on with any more monies.
Well, to put it, to, to make it politically correct here, that budget for 350, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, George, 75 to each fire company. And the other part for the fuel, that's part of the, that's part of the budget, the 25,000 for the fuel. And we did that when we just about got on board because at that time, as it is today, as it was in 2012, fuel was five hours a gallon. So what we, instead of giving them an increase in their allotment, we said, all right, well, what is your gas bill?
I was the guy that suggested that.
Right. So basically, you're not get, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. You are helping them support, but, but you're
Have we, has it been determined if there's like a financial need, like that they've said that they can't afford the uniforms this year? So they're seeking additional funding to like fund the uniforms this year? So, so is there, is there like, is, are the costs? Cause, cause we haven't seen the 990s yet. So are like the costs out of control this year? And we're going to have a problem because we may need to look at it a little bit deeper and say, maybe, maybe they don't need $15,000. Maybe they need a lot more money if the controls, if the expenses are like significantly higher.
We could look at them once. Right. We could look at that. But like, but, but, but like even when Nicole just asked about with the relief, if it's $31,000 a piece, that's $93,000. So if the AG approves, um, the consolidation part, um, that 90 goes into one pot for the relief association for the Upper Chatchester Fire Department. It's no longer charter for Bruce Wayne Ogden Reliance. It'd be one charter. Same way with you. So will it financially be a little better? Yes. No, actually it's dropped the last three or four years. Well, based upon the insurance and all that stuff in, in our township, so I don't, we don't know. It could drop. Yes, it could. So the chiefs. The, the executive board of the, everything goes through the, the new executive board of the consolidation committee now, which is the president and the chiefs. I think there's six of them, two for each. I, George, didn't I send that letter too? I thought I forwarded it. It came from them. And I, I looked at it again. I thought I did forward it. They were asking for the assistant to buy the three for the chiefs. Yes. Cause they were purchasing ten. Now, if they're purchasing 10, and I don't know where their money is right now, and this is June, the relief doesn't come to them until October. So they're towards the end of the, almost fiscal year for them for the relief money. No, I haven't seen the code yet. I didn't send it over. I'd have to get it over to everybody. Anything else? You good there? You were waiting on Joe. No, I didn't know if you were looking for something. Yeah. All right. I thank everybody. Need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Out of here. Good night.